It's Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Burnt.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Borden.
Here.
Mayor DeVeere.
Here. Item number two is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
We adopt the agenda as published.
Second.
A motion and second to adopt the agenda is published. All those in favor say aye.
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 All ayes. Item three, consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
Will we approve the consent agenda as published for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest?
Second.
A motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borden.
Aye.
All ayes. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so I'll move down to the podium to start This is my last one. I know, it's, this fall, it's just a whole series of lasts. So, council, I'm really proud to stand in front of you today to give an update on the strategic plan and where we are currently, how we're doing. So today's our opportunity for that status update and to have an execution report on what our cities, departments, and strategic leads have been doing. So I'll be looking at a number of different things, including the current dashboards. This is the total objective completion along with the tactics since our September 2018 update, our total plan compensation or completion date since September 2018, and closeouts. We have three closeouts that you'll hear from the strategic leads on, and then an update on high priority areas and select updates. So we'll include some updates on some of the closed-out objectives, as well as some that we feel that you would be interested in an update on. So first, the plan dashboard. Here you will see where we're at currently in the plan. There are 365 tactics, and I think we're, we feel really good that we are 67% complete, and our goal has been to be 70% complete by 2020, December of 2020. However, it looks like we'll be closer to 80% complete by that time. 15% of our objectives are in process, and last year, I stood in front of you and we had 44% completed. So we've made significant progress over this last year. On the objective dashboard, there are 67 or six, yeah, 69 total objectives. We are 34% complete versus 10% last year. 20 objectives have been completed, and 11 of our objectives are between 75 to 99% complete. And so I would point out that all of this information, the most current updates, have been populated by the strategic leads in the strategic plan tool. And so you can go on, if you have an interest in any of those that we don't provide updates on today, and get an update at that time. So our completed objectives, we have 3B5, 3E4, and 4E2. These three closeouts represent two under responsive government and one in safe, healthy, and secure. Two of these three that we're closing out are high priority objectives. And so I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Crystal to report on 3B5.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, Crystal.
Hi, Trigg. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So I'm very pleased and excited to stand here in front of you today and present the closeout to 3B5, which was our strategic objective to develop and maintain a competitive compensation program that enables quality recruitment rewards, excuse me, and rewards and encourages high performance. And I think we need a different slide, please. Thank you, Councilwoman Cavanagh. I stand here representing a team of individuals that helped us complete this particular strategic objective within the HR team, the city employees, the director team, and our compensation committee. So this was a group effort. So the activities that we've completed to allow us to come in front of you today, high overview, has been our compensation committee convened this year, and we reviewed our current general employee compensation program to ensure that it is market-competitive within the Treasure Valley. We completed our year three of our internal alignment, which is a review of our job descriptions. Been in front of you many times with updates on that as well. As a result of the compensation committee's recommendations for change, I came in front of you through the budget process, made those recommendations to you as a body of which you approved that budget and those recommendations this past late summer, excuse me, for FY20. As a result of that, we have developed some policies to support those changes that were approved, and we'll be presenting those to you in the next two weeks. In addition to that, we are currently developing a roadshow, if you will, or a presentation from Human Resources, that we will be going around to all the different departments communicating the compensation changes that become effective to them this year in FY20 for the merit process. So the performance measures that you have in front of you, the first one simply states that our retention rates will remain in the high 90s. So Human Resources provides quarterly updates to the mayor's office through Vincent that is then forwarded on to each of you through the quarterly dashboard, and as of FY19-Q3, our retention rate was 96.8%. The second performance measure that we have there is top performers' retention rates will exceed the overall city retention rates. So currently for FY19-Q3, our top performers, which would include are anyone who's received a superior rating in their performance evaluation or exceeds expectation, our retention rate is 94.5%. That is a point in time up through Q3. Again, we monitor it quarterly. We also have exit analysis information that we analyze and provide that data through the mayor's office on a quarterly basis. So we'll be continuing to monitor that and closeout FY19 to see where we end, but we're very close to the overall 96.8% as of Q3. The third one there simply states that salaries will remain competitive to selected private and public sector comparators. This is an ongoing process for the Human Resources Department. We continually monitor all of the different compensation programs that we have in place. We will have all of our programs validated through external consultants who specialize in compensation to ensure that we are market-competitive, and when we are not, which you have seen in the past, I do come in front of you and ask for a market adjustment to the salary ranges to ensure that we are market-competitive with our pay. The third one, or the fourth one there is to review compensation program annually to ensure program competitiveness. We operationalized a few of our tactics that were associated originally with this particular objective, and we wanted to ensure that there was a performance measure clearly stated within this objective to communicate to all that we will continue, this is not because we're closing it out today, we are not done, we will continue to monitor our compensation programs, we will continue to review current trends, we will continue to ensure market effectiveness, and that's our commitment to you, to our employees as well. So with that, we have considered this objective to be closed out. As I referenced, we have several ongoing activities that are a part of our standard operating practices in Human Resources when it comes to compensation, and we will continue to exercise those efforts as we continue on. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Crystal, council, any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Roberts.
Mr. President, Crystal, wonderful job.
Thank you so much.
Couple of questions in retention.
Excuse me.
In retention rates, do you keep those by department as well?
So we originally started with the overall city retention rates, and we are now starting to break that down to the department level and provide those to the mayor as well.
Wonderful. Follow-up?
Please.
In retention rates, I've seen companies count retirement, not count retirement, or only count early retirement against the retention rate. What do we do with that?
We count, include retirement, and I'm looking at Christina because she pulls this report for me on a quarterly basis, and I see that she's nodding her head. So yes, we do include retirements as a part of our retention rate.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Just one question for you, Crystal. Appreciate you touching on the performance measure related to salaries, and I know all the work that you and your team do to make sure that we are competitive. Just curious, I think you and your team do a great job of communicating that to us. Oftentimes, directors are here in the room, they hear that. But can you share with the council kind of what your strategy has been with communicating that to our employees so that they're aware of the great efforts and lengths that you guys go to to make sure that we're paying our staff appropriately with what the market can support?
Certainly, thank you, Councilwoman Cavanagh. So one of the things that we implemented last year is we went around to all of the departments, hence the roadshow, and we spent time at every staff meeting, we reached out to the department director, asked for specific time, committed on their staff meeting agendas to specifically talk compensation with our general employees. So last October-ish, Laurlee and I went around to 10 different departments, 11 different departments, and facilitated 10-plus meetings with all general employee staff members, and spent significant amount of time communicating our current compensation program and also engaging in conversation and getting their feedback and answering their questions. So we implemented that for FY19, and we're continuing that now in FY20 and plan to continue that going forward.
President, just a quick follow-up. Are all employees invited to that? Are all employees required to attend? How does, how does that work?
Councilmember Cavanagh, all employees are welcome to attend, and that's why we reached out last year and coordinated it through department staff meetings where attendance is a requirement. If we had employees who missed a staff meeting, then we encouraged either, A, that they visit with their supervisor, who could then communicate on HR's behalf, or we made ourselves available for one-on-one meetings with those employees as well in Human Resources to cover the information with them as well and answer any questions that they had.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council? Crystal.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Brad.
Good afternoon. Thank you, council. Madam Mayor, I get to talk to you about Objective 3E4, which is implementing a cost of government program in order to evaluate and establish a priority-based budgeting system for the city of Meridian. I'd like to start off and say, tell everybody thank you that has been involved in this, mayor, and it's been a citywide effort from all the departments to bring us to this point where we can call this closed. High-level, priority-based budgeting asks the question, what do you do? What is it that you do? How do you spend your time? And in answer to that question, we've come up with, we have 266 individual programs that identify exactly what it is we do. That has been step one. The second step of that is then to figure out, all right, you know, how much does it cost to do those things that we do? And to do that, we take the budget, in this case, it was a 2018 budget, and we allocated that budget across those programs. So very high-level, you know, that was the objective. You know, we call it the cost of government, and thankfully, that's been done. As a result of that, we have a present priority-based budgeting site that graphically shows the results of, of our efforts. We'll get into a little bit of that later, what we will, we bringing that back to you. As far as metrics are concerned, you know, first thing we had to do was we worked with a consultant, a resource X out of Denver. They were a phenomenal partner in helping us navigate this. We, second objective was a pilot program. We initially launched this with six of our departments, and then after that, we rolled that out to each of the individual departments throughout the whole city. Recently just finished that up. And, you know, part of that, you know, the last objective, you know, then obviously we, as I mentioned earlier, adjust or spread that cost to all the programs that identified, you know, kind of a few minutes ago. The last thing is we needed to estimate or determine the feasibility, viability of launching, of doing the priority-based budgeting program, and it is a viable thing we can do with our current resources. So I don't think we'll have any problem doing this in the future. As far as lessons learned, we've learned a few things. One thing is we've learned how everybody spends their time. It's been interesting to see, especially from a managerial aspect, the workload and how it's being spread to all the different employees. That's been insightful for a number of our departments. Some of the feedback I've got back from, from some of our, you know, managers and whatnot. Another thing we've learned is it would be good to have a uniform cost recovery methodology, if we, you know, something that I think would be a great, that way we're all on the same page, because that translates into, you know, our last item that I have here as far as lessons learned is, you know, determining, are we truly recovering the cost? So if we're charging a fee for something, are we truly recouping the cost of that fee? And does that, you know, match, you know, whatever the approved philosophy is? So those are some of the things that we've learned to date, stuff we're still working on. As far as next steps go, I will be coming back, potentially with Todd, we're still working that part out. We'll be presenting the overall results in more detail so you can see and feel and understand exactly what it is and the results of our efforts. That would be, you know, the results of phase one. We'll also be presenting our next steps as far as phase two goes. Priority-based budgeting, once you understand the cost of it and understanding, you know, how we spend our time and the cost of doing it and having all that allocated to the different programs, we then, you know, need to do the priority part of priority-based budgeting, which is, you know, looking at each program through the lens of our strategic objectives and identifying which ones meet that most and which ones, or contribute most to our strategic objectives and which ones don't. So we'll be going over kind of more of what that means and how that works, and as far as, you know, and then what our plan is for implementation of that program moving forward on future years. So as far as, you know, the objective for now, it was implement a cost of government. We've done that, and again, just like to tell everybody thank you for helping me work through that. It's been an enlightening process. With that, I'll stand for any questions you might have, so.
Brad, council, any questions?
Thanks, Brad.
Cool, thank you.
Brad, I've got one for you.
Sure.
So maybe this is for that follow-up discussion with us. On your cost recovery reference, does that modeling need some input from us to provide you philosophy on, on items that might necessitate a full cost recovery and those that don't?
Thank you, Councilmember Borden. I think, yeah, I believe, yeah, we would need your input on that. At least, you know, if we're going to do something citywide, certainly your, your input and, you know, direction I think would be important. If I'm wrong, I'm sure I'll be told whether I'm mistaken there, but I, you know, I believe that we would need your input on what way we should go that way, so yes.
The reason for the question, there's probably some recommendations from you or from the finance department as to those areas where we don't intend to recover the full cost of the service.
Right, yes.
There's those that we do, and full cost recovery of all services clearly isn't obtainable. So that's not what you're modeling.
That's not what we're saying. We're saying we just need to identify, you know, what programs do we advocate, you know, a full cost recovery or partial or no cost recovery? It really depends on, you know, the overall philosophy involved. You know, we're working on that. That is something I think you'll be seeing soon and something we'll be working on, so. But it is something I think would be useful, especially when we come to, you know, ask the question of, you know, are we recovering the cost of doing business, you know, or are we not? And this process is certainly enlightening in that, so, good question. Thank you.
The, the original strategic plan has this objective marked as a September 30, 2020 completion, so that's off to you.
I don't think we'll have any problem doing that, so.
Good job.
We've been working on it, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Cool, thank you very much.
One more question. What month are you back roughly to present to council and?
That were, I would imagine by the end of the year, maybe as early as October. We're working that part out of it, so.
So more before.
Soon.
Okay.
Soon, so, cool. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, council members. I have the distinct privilege of presenting what I think is the coolest initiative that we get to close out, and that's developing internal sustainable initiatives, not only because does it impact and reduce hopefully our finances, but also improve our environment. So it's one that's exciting to us, and I'd like to say thank you to Jason for taking, Jason Corn for taking the yeoman's lead on that, because he's done a lot of good work. Couple of highlights real quick. We presented the environmental plan to you all, and so what that did was sort of take all of the plans and environmental initiatives that we saw across the city, wrap it into one document, created a timeline with some expectations that we're trying to achieve over the next few years, and with that, that's the assurance that this remains operational while we call it a closeout. It stays with us, it's ongoing, it's operational work that we know we have to do. Some other things that we're working on are developing project evaluations, so we've been working with stakeholders both externally and internally to help us understand our internal operations. So whether that be Idaho Power on our streetlight energy consumption or our lighting consumption here at City Hall, we're also working on various other projects. There's a unique opportunity we have for what's called steam abatement of weeds, where it uses a steam cleaner instead of chemicals, so we have a chance to reduce the chemical usage and the chemical costs, and we might pilot that over at the treatment plant to start, which is another interesting opportunity that we all get to work on around that. So speaking to the performance measures that we have, existing plans reviewed, again, we had the environmental program planned, and we feel like that achieves that objective and wraps everything into one plan so that we can have that document going forward. And then the performance measurement about increasing perception amongst the community by, I think it's, let's see, five percentage points there by 2020. While we haven't had the survey yet, we do and are implementing a communication plan internally through the department, Public Works, to educate and outreach those things that we are doing so that we can increase that exposure to those things, and hopefully that would ensure that people begin to receive that information and see that as an updated effort and improve that exposure. Some of the lessons learned, I think it's very clear to us that we need to do, and we are doing a broader outreach amongst the city, so not just Public Works. One of the things we're considering is working with the Parks Department around, I know SWAC has talked about recycling in parks, and how does that work, and how can we improve that, or what do we do with that? We know there's other opportunities out there, whether they be facilities across parks or fire, police, there's facilities, there's energy consumption, and so looking at that other city aspects rather than just the utility operations. However, we did recognize that the utilities are a major consumption of energy, so starting there was a good place for us to start. So that's the objective at a high level, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dave. Council, any questions?
Okay. Thanks.
Good job, thank you.
So those were three very exciting objectives that were closed out, and as Crystal said, in the compensation, it will continue to monitor and, and make sure that our city stays in line. Certainly, employee retention is a high priority, and those things are really important. And the priority-based budgeting, really excited about the things that our departments have learned, and when it originally happened, we were concerned that they might see this as a stick, and it's just been a real educating and very valuable exercise. So looking forward to those next steps in bringing their, their findings and the information forward to you. One of the things that David didn't mention is in the Parks Department, one of the examples of the environmental sustainability piece is in Home Court, we did the conversion from their lights to LED, and where it was $26,000 a year in power, they reduced that when they were doing the cooperation piece, but with the LED conversion, they reduced the power consumption by half. And so really excited to see, and that cost recovery is going to happen in a couple of years versus this ongoing expense. So a lot of fun and exciting things going on in, in those areas. So now we'll get to our updates in the high priority areas and some of those select updates. We'll be mentioning important milestones, status updates and progress on these objectives. And again, I would mention that all this information is on the strategic plan tool, and you can go in on any of the particular objectives and see what's been going on. Vince makes sure that staff is going online to really make, to keep everything relevant and updated. Okay, so the first area is 1A1. This was previously closed out, and we reopened it after we reworked the objective. So some of the current downtown actions, did want to update, you had the update on the main to Meridian last week, that they right now are working on the utility easements. The Civic Block, RFP, was also mentioned by Cameron. I think he gave you an update that Union Pacific has new personnel, and they're much easier to work with, they're interested to work with the city, and that's, that's good news, both on that piece of property across the street, but also as we look at the potential we have with the railroad corridor. So we do have the lease for our parking. MDC has secured the keys for the buildings across the street for both buildings that are existing. They don't have a signed lease yet, but the discussions have been very positive and favorable, and we're talking to some interested parties about that particular block as well. Keller Headquarters, you probably all read that Keller and Associates has been looking at that piece, they have purchased it, the Eric Davis property, just a portion of it. They are currently working with MDC on lease for the railroad property, and they did receive staff-level approval for their building, but they have yet to submit building plans, so stay tuned. We're, we're looking forward to issuing them a permit and getting that going. Another update that I had a question on is the Calico Cattery, the second building, the building that is on the Main Street side, it's looking pretty dead. No work has been done after the rezone that we did on that piece of property and, and the certificates of occupancy that we issued last year. We are trying to get an update on, on what the plans are for that. Okay, our next objective is 1A2. This was closed out, so this is just a couple of updates going on at the 10-mile urban renewal economic development district. A lot is going on out there, constantly seeing dirt being moved. The Brighton Headquarters Building is 80% leased, the Palacity Building is 90% leased, the Lofts, the apartments in that area, Phase 1 is 70% leased with the first 120 units. New tenants out there is United Site Services, they'll be doing ribbon cutting next month. Roadies Title 1 and Blue Cross Blue Shield is going out there as well. Future buildings that are currently underway, most all of them you've heard of, but Amerabin, Phase 2, 75% of that building is already leased. LaSalle is ready to commence. LaSalle is ready to commence construction and should be ready in September 2020. The Ten Mile Cantina, that's our food service building. It will be done the summer of 2020. The Seltzer Building, Building 1, construction has started. They're looking to move in in fall of 2020, and their second building will start then the winter of 2020 with a look of a start or completion date of spring of '21. They are still working on the first reimbursement from the Urban Renewal TIF money. And just to note, in the last six months, the value has been $20.6 million in permit valuation. So a lot happening in that part of our community. Objective 1B1, this is regarding our city's growth goals. And this was directly tied to our comprehensive plan. What has been completed is the short to mid and long-term growth goals. Steph has been drafting those up. Kudos to Caleb and Brian on those. This has been a huge project. I know we got an update last week, but Mammoth Project. The consultant and steering committee have been reviewing these guiding documents to the comp plan and just a couple of highlights from the analysis that was done as part of the SWAT in that. High land values are happening on the perimeter, and this is versus the downtown core. A lot of that is because the growth has been allowed and driven to the edges, and that is driving the prices up instead of really focusing in the infill. Enclaves, you've seen, are Swiss cheese. This patchwork offers low value and low incentive to development, so that was also identified. There are more trips that are coming into Meridian and staying in Meridian than going out for jobs. This is a big deal. You'll see on this diagram what that looks like. We had 29 and a half thousand that are in commuters versus the 28.1 that outcommute, and 72 hundred live and work in Meridian. This is exciting news, and I think it just underscores the energy that's happening in our community. As I mentioned, you had the presentation last week. We did a debrief with the steering committee and had a really good discussion and talked with them about some of those things of what's next and what policies we need to prioritize, working on after the comprehensive plan is adopted. It's like, how do you eat an elephant? You don't eat it in one bite. It's going to take a number of bites. And certainly, the comprehensive plan and the flume are a huge step forward, and then it's the work that happens afterwards. The draft plan will go to Planning and Zoning Commission next month, and we're anticipating the council seeing it in November. Again, we need to work on prioritizing what those next focus areas are going to be. Housing, which fits with Objective 2A.4. Open space, 1C3. And also part of the discussion has come up of districts and overlaid areas with more specific area plans, similar to what we did at the Ten Mile area. Objective 1B2, this is identify priority growth areas and incentivize growth and development. This was newly upgraded to a high priority area and is 45% complete. We will be having a council workshop to discuss this on looking at what those incentives and priority areas are. I know that Commissioner Visser asked what that meant, and those are going to be part of the discussion that we have with all of you. We want to start the discussion now, and certainly that discussion will continue with the new mayor and the new council as well. So we will be kicking off those discussions here in the coming months. Primarily, how do we direct our growth? How do you want to look at growth? We will have better tools for that discussion. Right now, we're looking at a service impact tool that will help visualize where critical city services are most readily available and if those areas are serviceable. And also, you heard in the discussion with Ada County, they're looking at a fiscal impact tool between, and they're working with Compass on that. So I imagine our staff will be involved and engaged in that conversation because it might be another tool that you can use in making your decisions. So this objective needs, has a completion date of July 2020. This was updated. It was listed as November 2019, and we think that the July 2020 is certainly much more realistic in light of bringing on newly elected officials. Objective 1B4 is now 70% complete. That's updated from last year at 40%. We will get additional information from the Public Works Department next month in their annual update. So just a few things that you'll be hearing and that are very noteworthy of what has been finished and completed in this objective. The water and sewer master plan and facility plans have been updated. All current projects have been prioritized to the 10-year CIP, and along with the cost projections, and that's all in the CIP. Spending scenarios are updated annually. They feel that is really important in looking at cost to income and making sure that we're constantly looking at our financial stability there. We do have this as a tool that puts us on a sustainable and responsible service growth pattern for the next 10 years. The wastewater plant is 80% completed. That is a big deal with everything that is going on out there. $31 million of the $42 million has been spent that was allocated. We have $24 million worth of additional infrastructure coming online in the next five years. And we do have a picture of that in the next slide that I'll discuss. But next steps under this is aligning with the adopted comprehensive plan and looking at a growth management system to foster growth goals. The map that I mentioned, the orange represents the projects that are for our sewer system. And this is a five- to seven-year rollout. The primary and the main projects that this represents is the South Linder Service Main Extension, the McDermott Sewer Main Extension, and several projects at the wastewater or waste recovery resource facility, something like that. Sorry, I almost went to WWTP, so. The blue represents the water investment projects, and this includes the Victory to Ten Mile Water Main Extension and four supply well projects. So a lot going on continues to keep our public works staff very busy, and I am very proud of what they do to continue to ensure that we are responsible with the ratepayers' money and that that fine balance between existing services and providing those services and the cost of growth are adequately assigned. And we appreciate you guys. Okay, Objective 1C1. This is codifying the existing city impact, area-city-of-impact boundaries. As you know, we have come to a gentleman's agreement with the city of Kuna. Those communications have been verbal and between staff at this point. And we have realigned that through the agreement, as you saw last week. We will be working on a case-by-case basis with Kuna, and you'll see how some of that works at this meeting on considerations and some of those that cannot be worked out at the staff level. It needs a weigh-in by city council. We do need to have a conversation with the city of Starr. Staff worked with them directly when they were updating their comprehensive plan. I don't know if you are aware, it encroaches into our area-city impact, and we need to have a conversation with them. Also, I think one of the things that really fits into this is a report that we've given you with the post office. The post office has agreed to work with us to allow for people in our area of impact to make a choice on if they have a Meridian zip code and address, and they can change that. We still need to sit down with the post office to discuss exactly how we're going to go about letting residents in those areas know that this is an option and kind of that next steps. So we'll be reporting back to you in November on what that step forward will look like. So it should clean up those areas where they have a Nampa address, they're in Ada County, and they have a heck of a time voting because they have to prove that they actually are in Ada County, not the city of Nampa. So next steps in this objective is awaiting approval from Ada County and adopting our comprehensive plan and going through the application process and to talk about our boundaries in the future land use map. And this has been moved out to early 2020 because it's very dependent on also the comprehensive plan. Objective 1C3 is a new objective. It's been rewarded and rewritten from last year. It's about open space, so it's all about what is open space, how do we preserve this, and what do our citizens really want? And I mentioned this under next steps primarily as a priority item after the comprehensive plan is adopted. We will start discussion with this council, but certainly it will continue with the new mayor and city council members. So we will be trying to get some kind of a basis by determining questions with a survey. We have provided that to you. We've gotten some feedback. We'll be polling the public this fall, and we'll be using the same methods that we have been in engaging the citizen's voice on Nextdoor and social media outreaches, potentially adding questions on the citizen survey that we'll be doing next spring. We'll be identifying potential areas and policies, funding, those kind of things that will help with the dialogue. So that's certainly a next item for the newly electeds. Objective 1D1. Now, this is something that you saw, the Master Mobility Plan, also last week that Caleb shared. ACHD has been involved. I met with Director Wong last Friday, and Justin has been sharing that with the leadership. This plan is a comprehensive look on the existing and planned transportation infrastructure that's important to our viability and quality of lives for our traveling public. It will create a story map with the future networks as they come online, and priorities and development could change these, but those things should be communicated and a part of the decision-making process. So the next steps are to engage with our partners, and I believe this is also something that our Transportation Commission has taken on. And they've been involved in this process as well. Objective 2A1, and identifying, develop, and utilize tools needed for successful attraction and retention of jobs. You're going to see a common theme here. With a new economic development administrator, she has had a chance to do a cursory look. She did this before she even got the job offer, but she has been taking a look at these. And here are a few quick thoughts regarding this objective. She sees that we can implement quick changes to increase the city's online presence as a competitive business location and to create a targeted marketing program that will have a detailed industry analysis with a focus on companies that will create those family wage jobs. And that will be a specific priority for Tori's in the coming weeks and months ahead. Last month, you heard from the Community Development Department that we had a creation of over 2,400 new jobs. We saw over 100 new businesses come to town, and we have an extremely low unemployment rate of 2.5%, which is a blessing and a curse. It certainly presents a challenge that we have heard from most every employer that we've been talking with. Objective 2A2, under maintaining and developing a broad spectrum of partnerships in our business and job arena. Quick thoughts from Victoria are continuing to foster the relationships with our real estate industry. The Chamber of Commerce has created a Real Estate Advisory Council that I'll be introducing Tori to tomorrow and giving them a development update. And so we wanted to quickly integrate her into those key partners. Work to solidify ties with our educational resources, and we'll be also having dialogue next month with ICOM and ISU, introducing Tori and talking about some exciting things coming up, so stay tuned. There's some really meaty stuff that is coming up in this health arena with our education partners. Tori will use our performance measurement system in order to set defined goals. We have to start talking KPIs, and she's taking a look at some of our initial draft to refine them and to help us determine what does success look like in economic development. And she will define the outcomes that we expect with our partners, working with them, and also our expected outcomes with our marketing materials. So stay tuned again on that. These will all be updated in the March update, and you'll see any changes as they occur on the strategic plan tool. Objective 2A3, in promoting job growth. Tori has reviewed the industry analysis from the comp plan, and she's working to make an actionable plan to that. We will bring and update this objective next. We will bring and update this objective next spring as well. I just would remind you, I think that Cameron mentioned it in his update, and you saw this in some of the initial material that came out after they did a draft. But the highlights and target areas are in manufacturing, healthcare, professional service, and technology. And the last tactic in this area that's at 20% is regarding certified sites analysis. We really want to wait on that until we have solidified what those target industries are so we can make sure that it's relevant to this objective. Objective 3A2, in improving citizen access to government. The last 10% of this is pretty meaty. We want to see how tools work before we complete this. This objective was about improving accessibility to our citizens, to city government. Currently, we accept public comments via voicemail, text, and video text. And we also have an internal voicemail system that is checking daily for citizen messages and updates. We also have an opt-in system for the texting options. We need to really see how these work, how it works with some of our policies and public records, tracking, and those kind of things. And we should have some additional clarification on another aspect of this objective on advisory votes. They're looking right now, do you need legislation to empower that citizen vote or voice or not? And so we will be bringing a presentation next month, by the end of October, to give you a more detailed update on this objective. So exciting things in that. And I would like to thank both Robert and Chris. The Clerk's Office has been very engaged in this objective. Objective 3B4, developing an employee engagement program. It's currently at 90% complete. It was last year at 55%. I just got back into town, and I can tell you, in one of the roundtable discussions that I attended yesterday, employee retention is becoming a key focus from our employers in how to retain them. So this employee engagement piece is extremely important. And here are a couple of the things that have been happening. And you saw the first one, or one of them, at the employee picnic where we recognize care champions. One of the things that came out in our employee survey is they want to see more emphasis on incorporating our values of our city into our daily work, holding people accountable, holding them up and making decisions to those core values of customer service, accountability, respect, and excellence. So those care champions were really important. We wanted to really recognize those employees that exemplify our care values. A stay interview. And I think that maybe there is some touch on this in the compensation piece, but this has been developed. It's in the final stages. And we want to go out and talk to some of our longtime employees and find those things that really keep them here, keep them rooted and challenged and so loyal to our city. It's really important that we find those kind of things out, not just exit interviews, but the interviews of our current workforce is extremely important. Engage employees to understand why they stay. And right now, Public Works does integrate an employee suggestion form that also will be looked at to bring perhaps citywide. So there are many active steps that are going on in this area. We have the monthly mayor's message, new employee engagement survey incorporated into hiring. One of the things that I don't know if Crystal mentioned, but we have the HR2U. So if an employee missed a department update, they have a number of different ways, from minutes from the department meetings that are internal to that department, to the HR2U newsletter, and the mayor's monthly message. We are focused, we have completed a succession planning exercise, and that is to recognize our employees. We've discussed flexible work schedules that you'll be hearing about next week. So all of these are conversations that have been important to our employees that we are actively discussing because it is important that those tools where we can retain employees are utilized. So we'll be evaluating the efficiency of programs these coming months and look for probably a closeout at the next update. Objective 3D1. This is now 65% complete, or was 65% complete last year. It's now 85%. The plan is on track for overall completion. Vince works the plan and all of our strategic leads. This is not a plan that sits on the shelf. We do believe that completion at the December, end of December of 2020 will be in excess of 80% completion. And I think that is very noteworthy. We'll be starting conversations with stakeholders at the end of the year. And we're going to be starting work on the next five-year strategic plan, starting the beginning of the year, even though we'll have one and a half, or we have one and a half year left on it right now. But they need to start a year in advance to see what should carry forward into the new plan. Vince will be taking a strategic planning facilitation training with the American Management Association late next month to see if he has the ability to lead this or if he'll have some kind of need for professional services. And we mentioned that during our budget discussion. Objective 3D2, in developing and deploying a citywide performance measurement monitoring and reporting program, was 10% complete. It's now 15. Departments will be bringing their finalized KPIs, both their operational and dashboard ones, for a conversation with me next month. But we also talked about bringing some of the discussions on dashboards to counsel a couple of departments at a time over the next six weeks. We really want to know, what information do you want to know? And Dave Tiddy and I were talking about IT's dashboard. And he has done a lot of research on what different corporation board of directors want to know in order to support the businesses. And so he wants to come and tell you why you should care about his dashboard. And I think that those discussions are really important. Some of these, they're tracking irregardless. They make operational decisions, but these are the things that they feel the citizens will be interested in. We want to provide them to you so if you have a citizen question, that you have that information at your fingertips. This may transcend into the next phase of OpenGov. Because OpenGov now is going to take some of these KPIs and dashboards and load them onto OpenGov so that you can run these dashboards and have complete accountability and transparency to what we're doing in our departments. And I think that information is extremely important to our citizens to be able to see and for you to be able to utilize. So those conversations, I will talk with Joe on Friday. But we'd like to kind of bring the departments in front of you to have that initial discussion and get some of your comments and thoughts. So stay tuned. Objective 3D3 is deploying and developing a citywide continuous improvement plan. This is really exciting. So this was last 10% complete, and now it's 50%. We have an outline of our innovation and change program that has been discussed at the senior management team. Our first class of innovation basics started with 17 participants from finance, wastewater, the lab, police, building. And these 17 participants tackled four process improvements. The budget amendment, internal approvals, expired permits, training approvals, and water sampling testing. We will be getting some updates from those initial innovations. And right now, they're tracking on all of the departments that have innovations going on in their departments, what that saving has netted, whether it's staff time or budget dollars. We'll be able to report that back. We'll be highlighting at the all-employee meeting some of these innovations. And we'll be having our innovation teams that will be doing the report to their peers. So there's a lot of buzz going on, and we're really excited about what is happening in this objective. So next steps, the strategic analyst will be reviewing program details with all the departments over these next two months. And he has these classes running quarterly with the goal of producing small innovations within 30 days of their attendance at those programs. And they'll be reporting those back. So Vince, this is great. I was talking to a business, and they're really excited and want to see some of the outcomes because they're kind of undergoing the same process as well. And so we can exchange notes. That's great. Objective 4A4. This is in our public safety aspect. We've got a lot of stuff going on in this objective. I think this is the first time I've reported on this objective. So I'm going to report on a couple of different areas. First, in our SRO programs. Internet safety and school visits continue to be a high priority. And these are ongoing. And their goal is to increase the participation with the parents and to get them more engaged. They'll be evaluating classes throughout the school year and have a complete full program review by the end of the summer or end of the school year in June of 2020. The training has been conducted, and feedback surveys are in the works so they can start getting feedback from the parents who are attending. School safety procedures, drug trends, SRO functions, those are all going to be part of what they will be measuring. Crime prevention, this area is 60% completed. They've developed three phases for an apartment crime prevention certification program. This is really exciting by giving good tools to our multifamily apartment managers to help address crime aspects. We also have been working with some of our businesses and nonprofit groups, crime prevention, to really measure three different areas. One, education and prevention, their logs and how they are, how they use that information, pre- and post-surveys for program performance in using with these businesses, and future growth goals and implementation analysis. So they are using this targeted group to flush out some of these programs to see what are most effective and how we can move the diamond that, or move the needle. Traffic safety, they've conducted multiple traffic mobilization and training throughout this last year. These are patrol saturations, if you didn't know what a mobilization was, but I would give you a definition of that. These mobilizations have been in speeding and aggressive driving, as well as impaired and distracted driving. They've also conducted trainings with Live at 25 and our senior advisory board and their keys to safer driving. Approximately 53% of all injury and fatal crashes within the last five years involved aggressive driving behaviors. So in 2017 and 18, crash statistics show that we are moving the needle on that. They decrease by 3.9% through evaluations of hotspots. So they're really focusing on where the high crash data is happening, and they're increasing their patrols and education. Training programs are 80% complete. And what's exciting on this is they created joint academy with the city of Nampa in training our new recruits. And that was a real exciting graduation. I was honored to have been able, along with Councilman Lowell Roberts and I think it was just you and I. So they've also had, they've done their Lex Paul policy manual and updated, got those disseminated, and they have, are halfway done through their mental health training. So they've been very active in this objective, and that is the last objective to be updated. I stand for any questions.
Ms. President.
Ms. Mylan.
Madam Mayor, on that last one, 4A4, why is it showing 0% complete? They've done all of that stuff.
Because the objectives are all underway. They're just not ready to say they're completely done. Good question, though.
Council, any other questions?
Big kudos needs to go to all of our strategic leads, to Vince for really helping get his arms around this massive plan and bring consistency and uniformity to it. And now with the identified measurements, it lends to that next plan to be very rich. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, just not a question, but a comment. One of the, this was adopted in 2015, and it's been amended time over time.
Probably 30% of the plan.
It's a living document. But one of the things that we talked about four years ago was the burden or opportunity that is placed upon you to lead this. And you've clearly taken that to heart. I think the council has challenged you down to the tactic level to be accountable and report and track and measure and tell us. And you've embraced that, and this is a good example. You seem to clearly enjoy giving us updates and metrics on what's been done and what's coming in the future. And it just speaks highly to the leadership. Great staff doing phenomenal work, but it doesn't happen with how the plan was originally adopted. And it says, I bring it out every time we review this, on page nine, it starts and stops with the mayor. And the mayor has to lead it. So thank you much for doing that and showing that leadership to make these things happen and get stuff done.
Well, thank you. It's a huge team effort. And again, coming back from multiple discussions on the importance of strategy and implementation, so many people will start this and it ends up on a shelf. And our senior management team, the strategic leads, working with Vince, has continued to keep this as a living document. And I appreciate the council being flexible. has continued to keep this as a living document, and I appreciate the council being flexible, understanding the fluidity of the plan. And when you work the plan, you really find what is reasonable and what isn't. And having those conversations have been extremely valuable, and it probably has lent a lot into our process improvements, and I think the resulting benefits just keep manifesting and working into really good things. So I'm very honored to work with the city employees and those that really understand this is an integral part to achieving our mission of being a premier city. But thank you for your comments. I would thank Vince. I sent him probably 15 slides with changes at Monday at 1:00 a.m., and so I was frantically looking at it because I just rolled in to see if we had any further questions or comments. So thank you, Vince. You're awesome.
You should be glad that I was awake.
Okay, 5B is under our Meridian Arts Commission. Leslie, who I also saw out of town.
Well, I have no PowerPoint. As you know, we did recently lose Hillary Blackstone, and so she was usually kind of who held with that. But it's pretty, okay, I didn't know I was going to have to follow that awesome presentation. That was so interesting. But Mayor Tammy, council, I'm here to present our new strategic plan, and we've, I echo the mayor's thoughts, saying that, you know, it's a living document. You look at it, and you kind of see what you've done, what successes you've had, maybe what you don't have as an objective anymore. And one thing that we were very, very careful about doing this year is to review the sections of your comprehensive plan as it was developing and try to make absolute strides towards aligning our objectives to support the arts in the city in alignment with the way the comprehensive plan is moving forward. And so we did something different this year. We hired our same strategic planning facilitator, Delta James, but we wrote a grant for, it was a matching grant for half of her fee. So that was nice, saved the city some money, and it also gave us the opportunity to work with the Idaho Commission on the arts and kind of do a test run on some of their FAST grant programs, and they're really wonderful, and we plan to utilize those more in the future. So we did that. We worked with the current plan, made changes to clarify some of the language, just because, oh, certain things like, we had something that said, "Opportunities that will help them prepare for life in the 21st century." You know, that was a lofty goal, but we just felt like that language is, it's kind of obscure, a bit graphic on the art side, if you will. So we did some things to just make our plan more clear and concise and less artistic in its language, if not in its goals. So we also, like I said before, we made sure that we looked at the strategic plan in alignment with the comprehensive plan, and so to do that, we added a column to the plan. We added two columns, actually. One of them, well, we changed one column and added one column. We changed our priority column from being an annual, like, "We're going to get this done in two years." Well, we decided to go with more of a strategic prioritizing of each plan, so that it's near-term, midterm, or long-term. So that the next time we go through this process in another five years, and as you know, we'll start before it sundowns to work through it, we'll be able to look at that with a little bit more clarity and say, "That's a long-term goal, so chances are, that's one of the items that it's not surprising that we're rolling over into the next strategic plan." Or, "That was a short-term goal. Well, why didn't we get there, and what can we do to improve on our execution?" So I will just look at a couple of successes first. I would like to start with successes. I'm so sorry, I don't have a good, cool PowerPoint.
It's all right.
Thank you. Okay. So some of our successes are that we've had such a good time with our traffic boxes, and I just smile every time I see the little dog in front of the Boys and Girls Club. That's just got to be one of my favorites. And we're still continuing to work also with sponsorships for people who, a business that wants to sponsor a traffic box, and of course, that brings in some private money, and we get to wrap more boxes. So we work with private as well as our public funding that comes from MAPS to do those traffic boxes, and I just have loved that, and we'll be continuing that. We've expanded our Art Week. It was our third year this year, and it's something that's really gained traction, and so it almost has a festival feel to it now. There was chalk art this year all over, instead of just downtown. We had music at Generations Plaza. We also backed, moved the Concerts on Broadway forward in the season, which allowed us to have a Concerts on Broadway on the day, the chalk art competition day. So we were able to kind of bring those together and cross-pollinate some of those audiences to get the artists looking, listening to the music, the musicians looking at the chalk art. And so we also still had some of the booths from the farmer's market that stayed open, and so it just made it feel more like a party instead of a concert, and of course, all free to the public. So that was something that we really enjoyed doing. We had, we've put in, as you know, in conjunction with Parks and Rec, we've put in several park identification sculptures in Generations, and we put in, I think, three this year, if I recall, and so those continue to define our public parks and bring art as well as play to the parks. We continue to do concerts on Broadway, which I just spoke in quick reference about, and a free concert to the public, and we had Big Wow this last time, which was kind of a little bit off the grid. We're trying to expand our choices there to make it more, you know, some people love this concert, just more variety, more variety, bring more people in. And we are doing, you see the big Zamsal's mural that's up there, we're doing more, we're trying to use public and private partnerships to put up some of those murals, and I love the cow. So it's just so much fun. And so I'll just quickly go, I realize you've got a really busy schedule tonight, but I'll quickly touch on our very, very much more minuscule objectives that we have to go through. Public arts is to encourage the integration of public art as a component in community development. That's very well-defined. A good example of that is the parks, the art in the parks, and things like that, and the Zamsal's mural as well, public-private partnerships on that. We've also just recently approved a deaccession policy, which is something that we didn't have, and here, established plans and policies to guide the selection, placement, acceptance, maintenance, and removal of a public artwork. That's on page six under public arts. We do have a deaccession policy now, so that if something ages out, we have a way to move it on. And so that's something we've recently already gotten done, and that was a near-term goal, so yes. In objective two, arts, okay, arch deduction for you, well, there's a typo, and it's the word "education", and it is misspelled. So do you guys have that in yours on page eight? Is that still misspelled in yours? Do you see that?
It's fixed.
It's fixed. Okay, good. It's not in mine, so that's good. That's a funny word to have misspelled. We're continuing to participate, and we've upped our sponsorship with the Meridian Symphony Orchestra. They are doing so wonderfully. We, of course, sponsor the Children's Theater. We also are continuing to have student artists open for the Concerts on Broadway. We had a wonderful artist play the Sibelius, the first movement, the Allegretto Materato of the Sibelius Violin Concerto, which, well, it's really challenging, and he was amazing. Wasn't it amazing? Alec Trang, so that's just something we continue to do. In the performing arts, we are continuing to develop free offerings, such as I've already touched on, the way we've expanded Art Week and made more free things available and events, so we're working on that. I wanted to highlight that. Number four, public engagement. We are, one of our main near-term goals here is, because, you know, I always tell my students, you can sing the best aria or song you've ever sung in your life, and if nobody's there to hear it, you know, you just worked hard, and it was awesome for you, but no one else got to take advantage of that opportunity. So we are going to work with a consultant to get some help on branding and making arts a more cohesive branding strategy for our arts, so that more people know and can access what we have to offer. So that's one of our most important things there. In visual arts, we are continuing to have a curated art museum, and it's going pretty well. Once again, that kind of fall, you know, tracks back to what I was just talking about. There's so many people who are surprised by that beautiful gallery. Every day, it seems like I come across one person who says, "There's an art gallery in Meridian?" And I'm like, "Yes, and it's gorgeous." So we are really going to work with that branding strategy to get the news, the good news out. And the number six goal is, wait, did I skip one? The exhibition, nope. The number six goal is supporting local artists. We continue to do that by encouraging with the chalk art. We even had a couple of demonstrations during, by the artists that the public was willing, was invited to attend in the initial point gallery during the art, our opening reception. So we had a couple of artists that did some sampling and provided that opportunity, which was new. And our most exciting thing that we've added this year is that, and Mayor Tammy was at the Concerts on Broadway on Saturday and presented her first annual Mayor Tammy DeVeard Award in the Arts, and it was a wonderful new tradition that we've established, and it doesn't mean it'll always be given at the Concerts on Broadway. We may choose Art Week or another time, but it worked well at the Concerts on Broadway this year, and the recipients were Dwight Williams, Mary Jensen, and Anne, I can't remember her last name, I'm so embarrassed.
Vaughn?
Vaughn. Yes, Amy Vaughn, yes, our educator. And so we have three, we didn't have a student artist this year, but we will next year, but we have four designations, so four awards to be given out each year, and we're really, really excited about that, and the public seemed to respond very, very positively, and we're, you know, we just are very proud of that new addition. So that will be a near, mid, and long-term goal, and we'll keep that there. And that's it. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Leslie. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Leslie, appreciated the report a great deal, enjoyed reading it over the weekend.
Good.
A piece that I found missing, and I'm curious if the commission had a conversation about it, is the lack of discussion about inclusion. And I guess for me personally, I've always looked at art as a way to maybe challenge some of our status quo, and while a lot of Meridian looks alike and comes from the same kind of background and attends the same kind of church, we're a very diverse community, and I think that art, in my opinion, is a great opportunity to promote inclusion, and I didn't know if that's something the Art Commission discussed. If not, that's okay. I think there's some opportunity as you kind of grow. I just would encourage that if it's not already occurring.
Councilwoman Kavner, Mayor, I, we did have some conversations about that, actually. We didn't include it here, but that is a really good point, because arts are meant to bring and point to diversity and give people opportunities to grow in that way. We do, we have, we have become more diverse as a commission. We have grown our diversity in that way. We would like more men. Still working on that one, but we do have one wonderful man. But that is a very good suggestion to have actually in the strategic plan. And so we could, point of order, can we, is this to be approved tonight, or could we consider having another discussion and bringing it back?
Certainly.
Because I really do like that suggestion, and I'd like to take that back to the commission and see if we could add, where it would make sense to add a diversity objective.
Madam Mayor, I don't want to dictate, you know, I really applaud our citizen commissions, and so don't, please don't take that as direction from one council member that it needs to be in there. Certainly, if council's supportive and you would want to have a conversation with your commission before you brought back a final piece, I'm supportive of that. Whether it stays the same or there's changes that are presented, I'm good either way.
Okay. No, I just think it's a great suggestion. I think we had a discussion about the makeup of the commission, but we didn't have that discussion about reaching out to more diversity in the community and making that part of our, possibly having that be a focus of, in fact, we might not need to add something. We could add it as a focus of our branding and marketing strategy.
However you would see fit.
So, thank you. Thank you. Anything else?
Certainly. Leslie, if you would like to hold this over for a week, just to give that some thought on if you can wrap it, if there's any changes necessary, or really a lot of it resides in the tactics and that sort of thing, so.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I apologize. Let me pipe in real quick. I know that there's been a subcommittee working on this. They've spent a ton of hours, and I do really appreciate Councilwoman Kavner's comments. I think that there should be some, something about inclusion in there, but this isn't something we can hold over for a week. They would have to get the subcommittee together and then present it to the commission for approval back to, I think, then send to us. So it's, we're looking at at least a month down the road, and I don't know if that, if that's something that you want to do, or if it's something that you want to go back and bring to the commission and add right away into the next change.
Councilwoman Mylum, Mayor Tammy, I think that we could add this into our discussion with the marketing strategy. I think we could include it there and not have to add any language, if that.
Certainly, you can look for action in adopting the resolution if you want to bring any changes back, or if you just make how you apply the plan. Either way, talk with the commission, maybe have that conversation, and if a change is needed, we can always do that.
Okay. But I'm comfortable with having that thought planted and bringing that into the discussion of the marketing and branding, because I really think that's, we can encapsulate it there. So I'm comfortable with it as is now.
Awesome. Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
I don't, I agree with Councilman Kavner. I appreciate you bringing that up, and I think that's probably, you know, first on your discussion with the commission going forward. You've got great support up here for that, as being one of the principles that you incorporate into this plan. But I think it's fantastic, the work that's been done. I move that we approve Resolution Number 19-2166.
Second.
I have a motion and several seconds for approval of Action 6A, Resolution 19-2166. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you cover all?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum, Councilmember Burnt, Councilmember Palmer, Councilmember Little Roberts, Councilmember Kavner, Councilmember Borden.
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, council, we are at item number seven. We may want to look at putting this on our other agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
If item seven is getting tabled to the regular agenda, I move we adjourn the work session.
Second.
Motion, a second, to adjourn our work session. All those in favor, say aye. Elias Moschieri.